Good evening, everybody. Let's take a moment of silence and reflection and then we'll get started just for a brief moment. All right, thank you very much. And we'll officially call this meeting to order and welcome all of you that are in the room and regret those of you that want to be in the room that can't be in the room. We hope to get a lot done tonight, this beautiful day. And number three on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And let's stand, face the flag to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four on our agenda is a consideration of approving the agenda as presented. Is there such a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion, and Brian, you second it?
Yeah.
Any discussion here now, and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no, unanimously approved. Number five, approval, possibly the approval of the minutes for October 20th. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Mike made the motion to approve the minutes. Second?
Second.
Pat seconded. Any discussion here now, and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, say no, unanimously approved. Number six, public comments on agenda items. Madam Clerk, do you have any?
No, sir.
Records show that no comments received. We're moving number seven on the agenda, presentation of fiscal year 2019. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. We have Elsa Watts from Martin Starnes and Associates to give you the results of the year-end and 30 June 2020 audit. Elsa was a program and project manager for our audit this year. As preamble and lead-in to that, I'd like to point out that the audit was submitted on time. It was reviewed by individual members of the Audit Committee with their comments being provided to Elsa and that we received word late last week that the audit has been approved by the local government commission.
Welcome this evening.
Thank you. Good afternoon. On behalf of Martin Starnes and Associates, I'd like to present the Town of Holden Beach's 2020 audited financial statements. Some audit highlights. The town received an unmodified opinion. This is a clean audit opinion. There were no findings in the audit this year. There were two findings in the 2019 audit that both were corrected. And I'd like to thank David and Margaret, the rest of their staff, for all their hard work on the audit this year. It's been a pleasure working with them. Anytime we've requested information, it's given to us timely. It's truly been a pleasure working with the Town of Holden Beach and we hope to continue that working relationship. There are five classifications of fund balance, which is a measure of the financial resources available. There is non-spendable fund balance, which is not in cash form. There's restricted fund balance, which is subject to external restrictions by laws or grantors. Committed fund balance, which requires board action. Assigned fund balance, which has lower level of constraints than committed. And then unassigned fund balance, which has no constraints. The LGC defines available fund balance as total fund balance, less non-spendable items, less items restricted by state statute. The LGC uses this calculation to compare you to other units. The fund balance position for the general fund. You had total fund balance of $3.2 million. You had stabilization by state statute of $127,000. These are basically your accounts receivable. And this gives you an available fund balance of $3.1 million. This is an increase in your available fund balance of $616,000. Looking at your available fund balance as a percent of expenditures for the general fund was at 122%. The LGC requires a minimum of 8%. And this means you have approximately 15 months' worth of fund balance that can cover your general fund expenditures at 122%. Total fund balance for the general fund was $3.2 million. This is an increase of $619,000. You can see there have been steady increases since 2018. Revenues for the year for the general fund totaled $3.6 million. This is a slight decrease of about 2%. Expenditures remain very flat comparable at $2.5 million. Looking at your top three revenues for the general fund were comprised of the property taxes at 75%, permits and fees at 8%, unrestricted intergovernmental revenues at 7%, and other revenues made up 10%. Property taxes remain steady at $2.7 million. Your tax collection rate was 98%. Unrestricted intergovernmental revenues were at $265,000. This is a decrease of about 8% due to some decreases in utility franchise taxes. Permits and fees were at $296,000. This is an increase of about 4%. Looking at your top three expenditures for the general fund, you had general government, which made up 33%. Public safety made up 38%. Transportation was 13%. And then other expenditures made up 16%. General government expenditures were up about 5%, up to $833,000. Public safety expenditures were down 5%, about $975,000. Transportation expenditures were up 8% due to more street paving and equipment, and that was at $324,000. Looking at your water and sewer fund, you had required debt service for the year of $744,000. You had charges for services of $1.8 million. And you had unrestricted net position, which is what is available in the fund, of $2.9 million. And to look at your quick ratio, which measures the ability to meet your short-term obligations with your most liquid assets. You had current assets of $2.8 million, less your current liabilities, divided by your current liabilities of $199,000. This gives you a quick ratio of 14.35. And the LGC is normally concerned if it's less than one. Cash flow for water and wastewater, you had cash flow from operations of $680,000. You had debt service of $744,000. This gives you a cash flow less debt service of negative $63,000. And this does conclude my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Commissioners, anybody got a question?
Elsa, we didn't have a chance to meet. I'm Woody Tyner, I'm chairman of the Audit Committee. We did, I think David said earlier, he submitted a couple of questions to you from the Audit Committee members. I assume you responded to the...
Sure, yes, I did.
And none of them were, I saw the questions, none of them were material questions. They were just more understanding questions.
Correct, right.
And the other thing, which I think is a big accomplishment, is the two deficiencies or weaknesses we had last year. You feel very comfortable, we have addressed those and gotten them out of the way.
That's correct.
Okay. And I think we need to give Margaret a big hand because she did a lot of the work to take care of those two deficiencies. So, Margaret Lancaster, thank you very much.
And Mr. Hewitt?
And Mr. Hewitt.
The entire finance department.
Well, I was trying to get everybody, but you kind of overlapped me there. So, everybody worked on the project. All right.
All right.
Any more questions? Staff, anybody got a question or comment? Thank you for your services. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Okay. We are on number eight. Police chief, give your report. Chief Dixon. Remind everyone to speak into your microphones. We're still having complaints from the public.
The big takeaway I have for October's police report is, in the beginning of the month, excuse me, we had a string of car B and Es that started down around the city streets. And our officers were able to quickly apprehend those two subjects. They've been arrested and taken to jail. So, they are off our streets. We're in much better shape now. So, officers did a good job with that. It's really all I have to pass along right now. If you've got any questions, comments, or concerns about the report, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Okay. Any questions from anybody?
Jeremy, can I ask you two questions? Just, and this is just educational questions. Business check, 106 events. We don't have that many businesses, so why so many?
It's just through the nightly checks.
Oh, nightly checks?
Yeah, yeah. Officer may check five businesses one night or may check 12 businesses one night. I think we have about 17 over here.
Okay.
So...
So, that's every night?
That's, that's every, that's, that's correct. That's across the month.
And what's a keep check?
Keep check is when a resident goes out of town and they ask us to keep a check on their house, they'll fill out a keep check form and we'll do the same thing as a business check right by the house and make sure everything's kosher.
Mike, when you go to an East Carolina football game, you can ask them to check your house.
Oh, okay. But that'd be about every week here. Thank you, Jeremy.
Any more questions, anybody? Thank you, chief. Thank you for you and your staff and all that you do. Mr. Sullivan?
For the people that are listening, the topic is the discussion and possible action on employee benefits. In August of last year, we had the results from our survey that was conducted to determine whether the employees in Holden Beach were being paid a competitive wage and whether the fringe benefits that were available on Holden Beach also were competitive with the neighboring communities. After we received that report, we had a number of meetings where we discussed the different aspects of the report. And we decided to increase the salaries of the employees to meet the recommendations of the report. And we also tweaked some of the other benefits as far as holiday pay and holidays and vacation time, et cetera. The one issue that we did not address, although we brought it up and members of the prior board thought that it would be better to leave it to the incoming board to address, was the fringe benefit having to do with the insurance premiums for the employees. So, for the benefit of, again, for people who aren't here or haven't looked at the agenda and packet on, on the internet. We, we have the study, and in the study, most of the towns pay full cost of the benefit for their employee. Where there's a difference is where the employee and family insurance is, is concerned. And that ranges from 0% according to this chart at the time of Brunswick County and Shiloh and Ocean Isle Beach to 80%, which is Holden Beach. And then there are other locales that have 68%, 50%, 40%, 30%, 45%, 40%. So, as I said earlier, this was an issue that we tried to address when the, between the time that the survey was conducted and the last election, but it wasn't done. So, the question I have tonight for the board is, having had an opportunity to look at the chart and to think about it, do we want to discuss whether or not to change the contribution that the town makes towards the health benefits for the employees? So, to make, to make it simple, I'll make a motion that I would like to discuss that issue.
Second, anybody? Anybody want to second the motion on the table? Hearing none, motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion needs to be put forward?
No, sir.
From anybody? If no more action to follow, we will move to the next item on the agenda. Number 10, town clerk, Ms. Fennel?
We put out a request for proposals for legal services per the board's direction last month. We received two proposals back and they are in your packet. It's the Pro Law Firm and the Law Firm of Richard F. Green. So, we just need direction as to how the board would like to proceed with the process.
I'm, I guess, I'm a little disappointed that we didn't get at least three, just because, and have a little bit more variety here before we decide how we want to interview or make a decision. Would it be out of line to ask for this to go out one more time and see if we can get more responses before we sit down and make a commitment to interview or to make a decision?
It's completely up to the board's desire.
If I may... Miss, who was that?
David.
No. I was going to say I was disappointed as well, and I'd also like to throw an idea on the table. I don't know whether the board would entertain it or not. I'm not saying yes or no, but a thought would be to go back and ask for an interim service from, kind of where I have my head, what's her name?
Noel Fox. Noel?
Noel, Noel. And see if she would serve as interim as we need her and not on a daily payroll basis. But if we needed any legal services during this interim period, if she would help us out, that's just a bone to throw on the table. Because right now, we don't have anybody, right? And she knows the history and, and what we're all about, so. But I agree, I would like for us to have more considered than just two. Not taking anything away from the two that have submitted. But, anyway, anybody else have any thoughts?
Rick's a taxpayer. Rick Green. You know, and, and I mean, he's, he's right here at us. And, and, you know, before we go ask someone else, I think we need to look at those two if you want somebody on the interim. You know what I'm saying? He, he may serve also.
And he has served the town in the past.
Yeah.
But I do agree with the mayor that, given the kinds of things that we're going through right now and some of the near-term items, we probably will need some legal help on. Noel can just step right in because it's just, if she's, if she's willing to do it because it's a continuation of things that she was dealing with for a couple of years. But I would like to move that we do put out a request again to see if we can get more, some more proposals from additional legal firms.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second. All right, made and seconded. Discussion. Mr. Hewitt, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just to reconfirm that Noel Fox has expressed desire in the past or willingness in the past and here again recently to assist us on an interim basis, if, if the board is so inclined. And also wanted to remind the board that we're using her to work on the Central Reach Project East months also already.
Discussion from commissioners, anybody?
We reached out to anyone else other than her?
No, I haven't.
I think we should do that before we do anything.
Well, we're doing that with our heads. And anybody's got any other ideas? I'm not opposed to anything.
All right.
I'm good with putting it back out of here.
I mean, again, if we don't get any additional, then we will address the two that we have. But, you know, it's, it's that time of year that things start to get a little bit towards the holidays and all that, and people may simply not have seen it or didn't act on it, but if they see it again, they might.
Well, one of the problems that we have, and many people in the room are aware of this, there are several law firms that have shut down because of the virus, which means that what they would normally be doing has been passed along to the other working offices and most every attorney that I have anything to do with, and they're all have more than they can do. And that's, in my opinion, the primary reason we haven't had any more reaction to our request. You know, I get calls at seven and eight at night, my attorneys are still working, you know, late days, trying to get the workload done that they have. The sales are strong and business is strong. Anyway, so it's a pleasure to the board. We've got a motion in a second. Move along, move the question?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous that we could back out and search again for job seekers.
Do, do we need a motion to have Noel fill in in the interim or is everybody just...
Well, that's up to you commissioners, whatever you want.
I, I think we do. I mean, it, it makes sense to me to have somebody who's filling in if, if we need them. And it also makes sense to use somebody that we are familiar with and is familiar with the town and the issues that, that we're facing and is also already working on some of those issues for the town.
Is there a motion to...
So, I'll make a motion that we ask Noel Fox if she'll fill in as the interim town attorney.
As needed?
As needed.
As needed. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? That's a no?
That's a no.
That's a no?
No.
Okay. Four to one, Mr. Brown opposes. All right. We're on number 11. Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. We were recently informed from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety that it was time for us to complete the designation of applicant agent form. We have to do one of these with each of the storm events that come through, and also we did one with COVID, so this is not something outside the scope of what we normally do. You have to designate a primary agent and a secondary agent. So, the suggested motion would be that the BOC hereby designates town manager David Hewitt as the primary applicant agent and assistant town manager Ferguson as the secondary agent on the FEMA resolution. Before you guys vote on this and discuss, just for the minutes, I would like to make you aware that we also found out that where this has been something that was required to go before boards before, that with the new portal system, they're moving to all digital and they are not requiring board approval. So, in the future, if it is all digital and there's not one of these forms, you may not have it come before you with future storms because they're moving in a different direction. Just wanted to make the board aware of that for purposes of future events.
Any questions? Ms. Ferguson? Anybody kind of, any kind of motion or discussion or anything?
Make a motion that we designate town manager David Hewitt as the primary applicant agent and assistant town manager Ferguson as secondary agent on the FEMA resolution.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, madam clerk. Number 12, Ms. Pat?
Okay, if it has to do with trash, it seems that I bring it up.
You do trash?
Yeah, I know, I know. But I, I did write a, a brief summary. We all know that rental properties are supposed to have at least one bin per two bedrooms. A couple of years ago, we were observing that there seemed to be a lot of problems with overflowing trash bins. And the town did an audit of rental properties, did find a significant number out of compliance. Letters were sent out, actions were taken, and the situation improved. This past summer, we're again seeing a lot of overflowing trash bins. I've come across at least twice where there have been houses that did not have the right number of bins. And the person who took the house over from the last renter said, "This is a problem. I'm going to call the rental company." And no, there's no other bin around. So, between the turnover we've had with properties, which means you get new owners who might not be aware, and then we had the storm where people lost bins, I think it would be a good idea, and I would actually move that the town conduct another audit of the rental properties and the number of trash bins they have, and then take action as necessary for compliance so that we go into the next rental season with enough trash bins again. So, that was, that was a motion.
That was a motion. Is there a second?
No, I'll second it. So, we can discuss it.
All right. What is, what is required to do an audit? I mean, who does it?
That was my question.
The town staff does it.
No, no.
Mr. Hewitt, you want to address that?
Enforcement agent is the code enforcement officer, which is Rhonda Wooton.
Mr. Evans is enthusiastic to give us a report on that. Would you come speak to the microphone, Mr. Evans?
I'm not real sure what I'm supposed to be saying here. The last audit that was done, we took the information that we had, we compared it to what was on the ground. We sent out, I don't know how many letters, based on the numbers that we had. And I don't know what percentage it was, but a great percentage of those came back with angry responses and incorrect. They did have the right amount of trash cans in a lot of cases. Trash cans were not visible to be seen. The information that was provided was not accurate to what was actually on the ground. And we bore, we bore the brunt of it. Now, some of them were not in compliance, but we got a lot, a lot of feedback from property owners that were not happy with the letters they received because it didn't match the information that was actually there. We then went back and re-audited all the numbers, went back and looked at it. We found some discrepancies and got with the company that gave us the numbers. And it did turn out that before we sent out the second batch of letters, that we've got a better idea of just how many people actually were in compliance. We do monitor that, that stuff during the summer. We make numerous calls when we see more trash by the road. We, if we, we see a, a house that looks like it don't have enough trash cans, then we do go out, we'll look and see if, if the house has the proper number compared to the number of bedrooms that we have on record and take action. We've never had anyone who didn't react positive, like a rental company or anyone like that, who didn't act positive when we responded. But we don't get a lot of complaints about trash and trash cans. We just don't get them. Our department, I know about two, of those two, the one that we investigated had the right amount of trash cans. I don't know about the first one, but I do know that the last one had the right amount of trash cans. of trash cans. That's the complaints that we got. But I'd say, I've not had a complaint, I've not had but one or two complaints. But like I said, when we're traveling the road on a daily basis, if we see it, we'll pick up the phone, we'll call, if we see Alan Holden's real, we call him, and typically it gets taken care of pretty quick. The problem with doing an audit, and I guess this is what I'm telling you, is that the numbers that we have, we're basing them off of information that someone else has. The other information that we can get, the only way we can get it is to go on properties. And I'm not real sure without probable cause that you can start trespassing on people's properties to tell if they've got enough trash cans or not. Because in some cases, they may, in the particular case where we sent some before, what we had was two trash cans around back, they had two trash cans pulled forward, you know what I mean? They've got the right amount of trash cans, whether they're using the right amount of trash cans, I don't know. But what I'm saying is, is that we did get a lot of, we got some feedback of why were you on our property, but we didn't, you follow what I'm saying? And it's just, it's a difficult task with two people to audit everything on the beach to determine if they're matching the trash cans. But I just don't, I don't, I'm not saying there's not a problem. What I'm saying is, is that we don't have a whole lot of complaints about the problem. And the ones that we do see and do recognize appear, it's not as if people are trying not to comply, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So I don't know that you wouldn't be, if you want to be better prepared for the spring, I don't know that a letter in the, you know, something in the water bills like we use saying make sure you got the right amount of trash cans, or something to that effect wouldn't be more effective and less intrusive, because there's really no way for us to make that audit, other than if we do a spot audit of some type. Because I just don't have the personnel to do 23, over 2,000 residents and start counting trash cans.
This time of the year, speaking from a rental agency point of view, so many of the houses have their trash cans, all of them are part of them in the storage rooms or garages. So it's a problem with that.
Could it be, could it be a reinforced effectiveness if we asked the rental management companies to send a letter and just remind their property owners of the requirements so that, and just remind them that come next season, you know, please make sure that you're in compliance?
And that's good, I think, and that's what I just said.
Water bill's one thing, but to get it from the rental management company in addition is a reinforcement, because a lot of people say they don't, either they don't get their water bills because they don't handle them themselves, or they don't read them.
Well, but the other thing is, is that, and I think this might be a missed point, but I may be wrong about this, but there's a documented, there's documented somewhere that somebody's got four trash cans, and the rental people are praying, the owner is paying for those trash cans, if they don't have the trash cans, you would assume they would want the trash can. Why would they pay for something that wasn't there? And so that's what we, the feedback was, was, look, I'm not throwing away the trash can, and if it disappears, I'm asking why I don't have one because I'm paying for it. And that was some of the response that we got before. So, I mean, does that not make sense? People were actually paying for the trash cans, it's a service that they're providing, and the rental companies are too. You're not going to do a whole lot of renting if you've got a whole lot of trash. I mean, it's almost like it would be self-regulating to a point. It would, I'm sure there's some out there that are being lost in the shuffle, but I think a friendly reminder, whether it through the rental or from the town, would be just as effective. Make sure you got the right amount of trash cans, you're paying for them, make sure you got them. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Any more comments, questions? Discussion, ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
What we're voting for?
No, I will withdraw my motion, if I may, if Mike will withdraw his, you seconded it, right? Yeah.
All right, so the motion is withdrawn.
And can I move that the town sends out a reminder of the requirements in the water bill as usual?
Commissioner Kwiatkowski, we'll be glad to take care of that without being directed by the board.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? Ready to move on? Okay. We are on number 13. Mr. Tyner and Mr. Murdock, you want to talk about parking?
We'd like to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Murdock and I prepared a document that's in your package that explains why we want to look at parking and gave, paid parking and gave some history behind what had been done by the previous board and the planning and zoning committee, and also Citizens Action Committee, I think is what it's called, Advisory Committee, excuse me, that had looked at paid parking in 2019. So the motion that Commissioner Murdock and I are making is, and I may have used the wrong wording here, we'd like the board to approve us forming a parking committee or a parking work group, whatever the appropriate wording is, that it would be staffed by Commissioner Murdock and I, along with the appropriate town staff members to look at paid parking. And I'll be glad, you know, after the motion, if we get a second on the motion, then be glad to go into further detail if the commissioners would like me to.
Mr. Murdock, you want to add anything?
We'll discuss it.
All right, we need a.
I made a motion.
You made a motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Made and seconded, now we'll officially discuss it.
All right. You want to say anything? You want me to go over the?
Go ahead and go over the nuts and bolts, and I've got some to say.
The items that we'd like to look at by this parking committee, number one, paid parking opportunities to investigate paid parking, and some of the technology has changed around paid parking since the last time we looked at it, which was actually about 2018. Jordan Boulevard, I think most of you know there was a design work done by NC State a number of years ago to look at reorganizing Jordan Boulevard, making it look nicer, making it able to have more parking. We'd like to look at that. We'd also like to look at boat trailer parking. The owner of Block Q has reached out a couple of times indicating that they would be interested in selling that property, which today a lot of issues for boat trailer parking, and the owner has indicated that they are talking to developers about developing that property with some type of housing. If you ride down there on a Saturday, you'll see the large number of boat trailers that use that property, whether it's legal or illegal, they're using that property to park. One of our concerns is if that property goes away, then the boat trailers will be parking where cars normally park on a Saturday. And the last thing that, and this is not an all-inclusive list, but looking at Avenue A, we do have, if you look at Avenue A, we do have folks that have decided to start parking right in front of the sand dune there. There's a possibility we could take Avenue A and make it a one-way street and add some parking there, and then make the parking down at the east end paid parking. So that's a number of the items we'd like to look at by this committee. Give you a little history, there was a community advisory committee in 2017 that looked at paid parking, and at the time, they talked to a couple vendors informally, and it came back and said it wasn't cost justified. November 2018 meeting of the Board of Commissioners, they instructed the planning and zoning board to form a community advisory committee to look at Jordan Boulevard, look at visitor parking, look at using town-owned properties for additional parking, and to look at paid parking. The CAC, Community Advisory Committee, went back to the P and Z, and with recommendations that were approved by the P and Z at that time, it was to investigate reorganizing Jordan Boulevard, visitor parking, they decided that there was adequate parking at the time, and didn't need to really look at town properties or any other properties. They did suggest investigating paid parking further and having the town issue an RFP, and the reasons were paid parking obviously could be a source of funds to cover expenses incurred by daily visitors, and also other towns for them at that time putting in paid parking. Both the CAC and the P and Z approved those recommendations, and they never were presented to the Board of Commissioners. Since that time that those recommendations were made, there's a number of things that are going on that have drawn our attention to looking at more parking. As y'all know, there's at least one large RV park that is close to being finished that will fill up, but a lot of folks that will want to come visit Holden Beach, hopefully, fortunately, that'll be day visitors that'll be looking for parking. There's another piece of property that as best I can tell was being developed, close to the, what's the place, the marketplace, is that name of it?
I can't remember, where the GM's at.
Yeah, 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 down there, it looks like somebody's building.
Crossin', a new liquor store.
Yep, there you go.
That's home of Jordan.
Yeah, that looks like it's going to be some type of RV park. We think we're going to have a significant number of visitors coming over on a daily basis because of those two RV parks. We've got more visitors because of folks not traveling out of state, they're now coming here because of the COVID restrictions. I talked about Block Q, the owner of the Holden Beach Pier has approached me and said if we ever decided to look at paid parking, that he would like for us to include his parking lot in a public-private venture to charge paid parking at the pier. Also the fact that we got seasonal police officers and, which is, we're talking about to handle more of the traffic in the summertime, paid parking might help offset some of that cost. And then I included Oracle from Currie Beach, there's a number of beach communities that are starting to implement paid parking now because the technology is a lot easier, and if you've ever used the apps that some of the other beaches are using, it's really easy to pull it up on your phone, put in your license plate number, use your credit card, pay for parking, and it's done. So, well, again, Commissioner Murdock and I believe that, you know, we've had other groups that have recommended we need to look at this, but nothing happened. We think a number of activities going on that are reinforcing that we need to look at parking here on the beach for the visitors that want to come to visit this beautiful beach, but at the same time, we need to look at some options to generate revenue to offset some of the cost. So Brian, I've said a mouthful, anything you want to add?
You did, covered everything I was going to say, but I want to drive something home in particular. We, as a town, have taken for granted that there'll always be a place to park privately on tracts of land that are on the island, have been used for public parking for years and years, and the owners of those properties have been receptive and really never said anything about people parking on their properties, and have allowed it to happen for years and years during the festivals, and I could name off a bunch of names that come to mind really quick. But I think we as a town as a whole take that for granted, that it's always going to be there. And as properties are being developed and they're getting sold, those are going away. There used to be a ton of parking at Avenue A, or Block Q over here during festivals, I've seen it jam-packed full, the, behind the chapel over here, and just various tracts of land that we've parked on for years and years and years that could just go away. And I think it's time that we take notice of that. The people are not going to stop coming, and I don't want them to stop coming, I want everybody to enjoy the beach as for their use and for the public to enjoy. And the other side of the coin is that the town does incur a substantial expense in providing, you know, the police have to patrol who's parking legal and illegal, we have to dispose of the trash, there's not enough public facilities, bathrooms, that type of thing for people to use, there's no portage on facilities anywhere for the public to use other than just a small amount, and it's just not adequate. And if we have to fund it, then as other towns have done and are doing up and down the coast, they're having to, we're having to turn to paid parking to fund it. And the technology's improved, where we don't have to have an attendant sitting at a gate in a parking lot, you can use an app on the phone and to get it done, and I'm not a fan of charging at all, which, you know, we didn't have to, but we have to cover the expense of, I think, of the people that come over to enjoy the beach in some way, because at the end of a busy Saturday in the season, the trash is massive on the beach, you know, we're going to have to have extra pickups, the police are stretched out to keep the peace and make sure everybody's parking, and the people are parking in people's yards, people are complaining. So I think it's time to, I'm not saying paint lines on the ground, but I mean, we need to designate some areas and possibly acquire some property for some additional parking while we can, while it's available, and not turn a blind eye to it this time. So, just my opinion, I want people to come and enjoy the beach, and they have to have a place to park. That's the bottom line. And I don't want them parking in people's yards or just wherever, I mean, it's just not the right thing to do.
I want people to come here. I don't believe that we need to purchase more property to have more parking for more people to come. We do have additional land, and it was, it was actually pointed out in the report that there are some additional places further west on the island, which, again, the people on the east end were complaining that everything is concentrated by us. Why can't we get more parking further down the island? So there are places where we can have lots that are put in, and I'm all for taking the land that we have further west and creating some parking lots. I'm all for maximizing the parking if one way on Avenue A can help figure out the best thing to do on Jordan and maximize what we have. I am not convinced that paid parking is going to help the police at all, because you're still going to have to look for the people who have parked, who didn't pay, or people to avoid that are going to park illegally elsewhere. We're going to have a finite number of spaces on this island. That's the way it's going to be. We can't accommodate everybody, it's unfortunate, I wish we could, maybe people can carpool, maybe the county can come up with a way to bring people that we don't have to have all of their cars. I don't know. But for us to spend town money to have parking, even if it's paid parking, I just don't see that as a good use of the town funds. Maximizing the properties that we currently have, I am all for, and I think a group to help design a better way to do it and to make sure it gets done, because I'm sure some funds will be needed, to bring it to the board for the resource we need, I think is a good idea. But at this point in time, to launch into paid parking before we actually maximize what we have, I think is premature, and I'm still not certain that paid parking on Holden Beach is the best thing to do. But until we maximize what we currently got and see what it means in terms of spread, I don't know that it's a time to have a study on whether or not we can do paid parking.
I don't think that's what we were talking about, people, I mean, it could be a part of it, but I don't think that's.
Pay parking was one of the first things that got discussed, so I'm just saying fix everything, maximize everything for what we have, and then if it looks like it's consolidated enough that it can work, get a professional in to give an opinion, but fix what we've got first. Get down on paper what is necessary to maximize what we have. The ideas in here are good, and again, those lots that we own that were mentioned a couple years ago that we could convert those to parking, take a look at it again, get a count, what does it cost to do that? Again, it's moving things west as well, looking at how to move things west, like we did when we created the maps, where now people are parking on the Marsh, the Marsh Street where, you know, they can park in the right of way. It has gradually moved some things west. I think we need to look at that as well. I think we need to look at that as well.
I I don't disagree with anything you're saying, other than I do think we need to look at paid parking and see if there's a business proposal, a positive business case there. Because I, based upon what we've seen in other towns, obviously, I won't say obviously, I would hope that that they're spending the taxpayers' money wisely and they're making money off that parking and using it to defray other expenses. But we won't know until we actually go through the business case. And we may have to, you know, find somebody who who's smarter than us on parking to help us look at it. But I I think it's, I think with the technology changes and with the opportunity, we need to look at it.
Are there parking lots more organized than ours are to begin with? Because, see, that's, that's, that's what I mean by maximizing what we currently have before you start going down the road of getting a paid parking estimate. Because, you know, we we sort of have that traditional, these are the big, big open lots and people park as they, and there's nothing maximized there.
No, I I think we're gonna have to organize the lots better before we even do paid parking. But but at the same time, I feel like we need to look at paid parking and see if there's a business case there. If there's not, there's not.
Let me just ask.
My business, something you're saying?
Well, I I guess I I just keep thinking, until you have the lots, the numbers, the locations, and they are fixed, then I don't know how you do a business plan. And at the moment, we don't have any idea of exactly how many spaces, what the maximum is we can do.
But you can figure that out.
No, I I beg to differ. I I think Tim could, off the top of his head, could give you a good idea of how many parking spaces we had because of what was done a couple of years ago. You you did all the parking spaces?
No, no, we haven't added any. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't added any parking places since.
Well, so I'm saying, you, we have a pretty good idea of what is. What I, what I would say is, you know, listening to all the discussion here, but you you wanna have two commissioners and a town staff be on this committee. What about the people it's actually gonna affect? What about the residents? We're not gonna have any residents on this committee?
Well, we can, I thought because of COVID right now, we could. Do you have any residents on your committee? The seasonal officers committee or?
No, but that that wasn't, well, that was a little different, right? We were, we were looking at the time, if you're going off off track here. At the time, we were talking about hiring three police officers. At the time, I suggested that instead of hiring three police officers, we should look at seasonal police officers instead. So, what we did was sent up the committee to look at whether it was cost-effective. But even then, in the meantime, before, before we got a chance to have the first meeting, decided to hire more police officers. So, it almost made the the committee moot. But this is, this is different. You're proposing to to do a study that's going to affect the whole town. But what we were doing was, was looking at a study that was going to look at the economics of whether it was good to hire more police officers or replace them with you.
I'm not opposed, I just thought because of COVID restrictions right now, we could.
I I understand that, but I'm saying that, because, I mean, to me, I'm all in favor of paid parking. I'm all in favor of it. But as, as we said how many months ago, give me a business model that shows me we're gonna make a nickel on it rather than spend a nickel. I'm all for it. The rest of the discussion, I I don't care about. But, again, you think about it, in order to possibly be able to make it economically viable, you have to do away with all free parking. Because every single spot on this island has to become a paid parking to make that viable. Is that what the people on the island want? Is that what we want? So, I mean, there's a lot of things we we have to consider, and I think you really need to have the input from the people who live on the island.
Definitely is it. Can we do that with the COVID restrictions?
I'd like to make a comment about citizen involvement if I can. I am not a proponent of citizen advisory committees. If the Board of Commissioners, regardless of what the matter is, if the Board of Commissioners has an item that they want to investigate, have the professional staff to gather the information and bring it back to the Commissioners to make a decision. That's what you guys are elected for, not to pulse it with the citizens advisory committee. You get your feedback from the citizens whenever a decision is put forth in order to be made. Those citizen advisory committees, in my opinion, all we end up doing is babysitting them. The, the expertise exists in, with the knowledge base at the staff level. That's where you need to get your information and make your decisions on. And then if, if however you want to pulse it in the, in the community for political perspective, that's, that's for y'all to do. But the professional data assimilation and the preparation, that needs to come from the staff.
Okay, I I'll respond to that, two, two things. I happen to sit on the sewer advisory committee. And if you remember, everything that's being done now came as a result of that committee. And that the Commissioners who were sitting at that time decided to get a second opinion, which was exactly the same as the first, and paid fifty thousand dollars to hear it. So, I can agree with you that there are times when the citizens don't have as much expertise as the staff. But I'll, I'll argue with you all night that the sewer advisory committee was not one of those times and that the town benefited from it. Secondly, I'll take what you said under advisement, and and I'll agree with you to an extent. But before we have a committee comprised of anybody, we should find out if the people of the town want it. Why go to the time and expense to decide what you're gonna do, whether you're gonna have parking, do away with all the free parking, and then, and then find out that ninety-five percent of the people who elected us don't want that? And then we say, well, we're not gonna implement it. Why not find out what the people want, if they're willing to do that, if they think it's beneficial? And then we'll let the experts in the town do the work that's necessary to to formulate the plan.
I I agree with Mike that knowing the public's opinion on do they or don't they want paid parking is important. I don't think that would stop us from working to maximize our parking situation on the properties we currently own before next season. That, to me, is just a logical step. Are there ways we can increase the parking? Are there those additional plots that we could put into, into play, things like that? That doesn't need anybody's opinion. That was in the last committee's recommendations. And it, it isn't a bad idea to bring that out again, count it up, see what it would cost, see what it brings. But I agree with Mike that we need to know if our own, our own residents want paid parking, want to make everything paid parking.
I wanna say one more thing, maybe we just blew this from the get-go, but I don't know how. This is a puzzle, and paid parking was a small piece of that. That was a statement made, that was a possibility, that was nothing insinuating that that's what we're gonna do. We need parking. We need to designate parking where people can see that it is actually a parking space. So, paid parking may or may not ever come to a fruition, it's just on the table. I'm not willing to take it off the table right now because I think it makes sense, it could make sense. So, I wanna maximize what we have because the visitors to the island, and I think Jeremy or anybody else in the Police Department can tell you, and the boat ramp people are parking on private property. And when that private property goes away, then it's gone. So.
And the boat ramp.
And the boat ramp, what are we gonna have?
Where the parking lots are, yeah.
How many, how many, really, how many parking spaces does a wildlife ramp have?
Three.
Exactly, like, I don't know, it can't be many, because it's right there on the bridge. I said, it may be five or six or eight or whatever, I don't have the exact number, but on any given day. It surrounds Block Q over there, and that's not gonna be able to be a possibility when there's condos or houses or whatever's gonna go there, they're sitting there, it's gonna be gone. So, you can stick your head in the sand if you want to, but it's, I don't know. I mean, there's people on the island that have boats that have to use the boat ramp on Holden Beach, and I know many residents of the island that use the boat ramp. So, where are they gonna, they have to take their stuff back to their house, I guess. But I don't think the parking on the island in general affects the residents of the island because they have houses and they have their own parking spaces for, for them and their guests and and the renters or whatever, they have a place to park already. So, unless they're driving.
It's an eight-mile-long island. There are a lot of people who go from the west and have to park someplace just as much as the visitors.
And I would make provisions for the residents.
If you read the article by Currie Beach, you know, if they had a sticker, they got to park there.
I'll definitely make provisions for the residents.
I I would actually say that on a lot of days, there's not gonna be any parking available for off-island people if all the people have stickers. And what are you gonna do when somebody's already parked anyway from across the way and somebody with a sticker comes and there's no parking for them? You see, this, the, the parking is an issue, I agree. And I think, Brian, you're saying what I'm saying, we've gotta maximize what we've got first. And that is step one. Maximize what we've got first and make that a priority to reexamine that last plan, all the plans here. They're good ideas, I mean, really, absolutely. Do what we can, have markings so that people actually, there are actually parking places that people see that they have to park in between lines, and that helps. And then see where we are, see what it looks like, see how much we can move away from the east. But that's step one.
So, who's gonna do it?
Well, there's nothing that says that you and Woody can't work with Tim and come back to this board with a proposal of, here's what we can do. There's these properties that have been discussed before, we think it should be done. It's gonna, there's gonna be a cost involved. You know, it's, it's, that's step one of a plan.
Well, that's, I'm in favor of that. As long as Tim's all right with it, and I would get Jeremy involved because they're the ones that has to, they have to police it. So, they know more than anybody probably about problems with parking, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, obviously.
I'm down with that.
I would make a, I would make a recommendation that you have David tell me and Jeremy that we're working with the committee. We work for David.
Whatever.
And not ask us to work with you, we work for David. Or at least I work for David. So, I would be more comfortable if you.
Y'all, yep, your, your structure on putting forth a motion to form a working group is totally structurally correct. It just depends on how you wanna move forward with that actual task or.
I mean, obviously, we need to look at how we can maximize the parking space. I I still don't, you know, once we figure out what our plans are, I still don't see there's an issue, why there's an issue with looking at a proposal for paid parking and what the benefit, cost benefit would be of looking at paid parking. But if.
I don't mean.
Yeah, I just, I don't see the issue with that. I mean, I agree, we need to maximize and organize the, the parking space without a doubt. But I do think there's an opportunity to generate some revenues that obviously other towns are looking at. And I think we ought, we ought to try to look at it. You know, there may not be a business case there, it may be, but you don't know till you look at it. Town planner, Mr. Evans, trying to get the floor here.
The, the two, the, the only two factors in both of those first committees, the only two consistencies were, that both of them came to the conclusion that paid parking was not viable at this time. That was it.
I got a report right here that said there was a recommendation.
I, I know the report that you had. We, we sent it out, we even, we even contacted them the first time. And the first time that we contacted the vendors, they came back and said that we did not have enough parking places to justify.
That's right.
The second committee was led by Pete Palace, not by Vicky Myers. Pete Palace was the chairman of the second committee, because she couldn't be chairman and planning board because y'all directed the planning board to do it. That, that, I was there for both of them. And it was also decided there that nothing had changed, that nothing had changed between the first and the second committee when it came to paid parking. So, I don't know how to report because Pete did give a report to the planning board. And whether that planning board got into some other position or some other fashion, I don't know. But I know that Pete gave a report, and that's the report that he gave, that there was, there was really no changes from the first committee to the second. And that's what, what, what was said. Now, if the planning board then chose the information and changed it and then reported some other way, then that, that, that could have happened. But the two committees came to the same conclusion. There was no difference between the first and the second, but the, but that, that had been no changes. Now, the second committee did not contact vendors, but they did look at the numbers again. And that, that was pretty much how it, it went down. So, we, we had all the numbers, we had all the gathering. All of that stuff then got somehow condensed. And if, in case the board members, the people that were here don't remember, I gave a presentation. The presentation was then turned into a, that presentation was about adding parking down here to the two streets that were connecting between, that weren't developed yet. It was in developing the section in, in the eight-hundred block. The plan, the plan the NC State was, the committee that looked at it came to the conclusion that the plan was not viable anymore because the whole end had been changed. You couldn't use it. You couldn't use it. I brought it here. I brought it here, Woody, I was in the meetings, I'm telling you what was said. The plan can't be used anymore. The whole, the whole end of it was changed. So, the plan that NC State created just couldn't be used. We even got a big planner out there where part of the parking was at now. Because it was, it was changed at some point in time, and things were done that didn't follow a plan that people didn't even know existed forever, which just happened to be thought of.
Can I, can I say something without being interrupted for a second? I understand that the plan that, that, that we found, because I was part of that on P and Z at the time, I understand that plan needs to be reworked. But the report that came out of P and Z, it's got Vicky Myers's name on it, recommended the town do an RFP for paid parking. They recommended looking at reorganizing Jordan Boulevard.
I, I understand, but that's what, I didn't say the planning board didn't. I said the two committees that were put together, the one they put together, the planning board came to another conclusion. And part of the problem with that was, was that there was members on the planning board that sat on the committee. In other words, the committee made one recommendation, the planning board came to a different conclusion. And one was that there, there needed to be an RFP done, another. I, I'm assuming, but they never reported it, they never, they never did anything with that. They just, I guess, gave that to the Board of Commissioners in a report. But that's as far as it went. But I, I don't, but I'm just telling you, there was no changes between the first and the second. There was no difference in the number of parking places and that the vendors were, were contacted. We, we ended, we counted these parking places. We went to each and every one of them, we counted them, we looked at them. And I'm not saying that it, it shouldn't be looked at again, I'm just giving you some background information as far as the paid parking goes and what was done. There was a lot of work done, there was a lot of work done. A lot of, the town staff did a lot of collecting of data. There was plans made, there was parking plans made. And all of that was, basically said was, you know, it was presented and then went off into the wild blue yonder. I could not tell you where it went. But there was a lot of work done.
Look, I was on Plan Arizona, I know how much work was done by that committee. And I, and I was sitting there when the reports came out, and I was there when you made your presentations. So, I, I mean, I understand all that feedback. What I'm relying on is that report that was put together by the chair of P and Z. And then there, and that was the recommendation to look at paid parking and for the town to do an RFP. And also look at Jordan Boulevard. So, that's, I'm using that as a historical document to say that's what P and Z recommended at the time. I'm just advocating we need to go on, continue doing some of that work.
It's my understanding that that never, that report never made it to the Board. It's my understanding that that never, that report never made it to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration, right?
My understanding was it was turned over to staff and it never got to the Board of Commissioners.
That, that was never turned over to staff. That report, we, it was never, when those committees took place and y'all gave the chairman, the, the planning board chairman the right to make a committee, it was the chairman's responsibility to provide that report. And that's the way those, those, those systems were set up. I promise you, if it was my responsibility to tell you to get an RFP, you would have got it. The report that the board asked for me to give, I gave. I gave.
I found the document on the town's website. So I mean, the town had it. I don't know what happened to it, but I'm telling you, it was turned over to the town. So whether the Board of Commissioners looked at it, I don't know. But the, the report is recommendation. To me, the report really don't matter. I mean, it basically said, here's some recommendations.
Well, the planning board, the planning board don't have the authority to tell town staff to, to do anything.
Okay, I'm going to quit arguing.
Well, they don't. The planning board can't, can't, can't tell me to report to the Board of Commissioners.
I'm sorry.
They're not the elected officials.
I didn't say they told you what to do. I'm saying they turned that, that report, they handed to somebody. All I'm saying is that report gives you some historical context. What I'm advocating is we take their recommendations and continue looking at them. It don't matter what happened in the past per se. What I'm recommending now is that events are changing. There are more and more people coming here, there's more and more off-island building going on. We need to look at parking.
Ain't nobody essentially don't need to look at parking more than I have since day one. And nobody been more involved in parking than I have.
We have a motion on the.
I made a motion.
We already have a motion and a second. What's the date on that report you keep referring to?
Uh, hang on just a second. March.
Twenty nineteen.
Thank you. March twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, so it's two and a half years old. Is that right?
One and a half.
One and a, one and a half years. All right, we got a motion and a second. Anybody else want to discuss or comment? Otherwise, I'm calling for questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Good night, all right? Moving right along. Town manager.
Yes, sir. Want to give y'all an update on the central reach permit status. We've held the camiscope and meeting, uh, the last week of October with various state and federal agencies in response to our September's, the middle of the, the permit modification. Um, the, there were several items that came out of it. But probably the biggie is that we've had, we're going to have to go back and look at regrading uh, sand samples from our previously permitted project in twenty sixteen. And also most recently, uh, the most recently collected samples, uh, that we just finished this summer. Fran Way is performing that services, service for us. Uh, we've conducted the initial discussion with the Eastman attorneys for expand, the expanded template properties. Um, and that sets the stage for, she's going to want to come talk to y'all in the January meeting uh, to discuss any required actions, uh, by the Board of Commissioners as we set up for, uh, going out for construction bids, uh, later in the summer. On the federal advocacy front, uh, yesterday was filled with virtual meetings to conduct advocacy briefings with our congressional delegation and, uh, federal agencies. Commissioner Kwikowski and Sullivan, along with myself, and Assistant Town Manager Ferguson, uh, were accompanied by, were chaperoned by Mike McIntyre, Stephanie Minzert, and Roger Gwynn with the Warden Smith Law Firm and the Ferguson Group to engage with the offices of Senator Tillis, Senator Burr, and Congressman Rouser in addition to meeting with David Leach, who's the Corps Assistant Secretary for Project Planning and Review, along with Sue Wilcox, uh, the Corps Senior Water Resources Planner, and also the General Attorney for the Office of Management and Budget, Gary Waxman. Uh, I think that was, uh, uh, pretty positive on all fronts. And I'll defer, um, any further commentary in case the Commissioners want to pile on, uh, as part of their report. To give you an update on our streets petition status, we'd sent out the first letters to Deel, Seagull, and Canal property owners, uh, mid-September. We just recently, uh, sent, week before last, sent our second request out as a friendly reminder, uh, that return by date is, uh, uh, the fifth of December, if people are interested. The affirmative responses to date on Seagull, we've got fourteen in. Deel stands at four, and Canal stands at two. Two points, um, I'd like to make, and I, and I have to be agnostic in, um, in, in communicating the town's position here. Um, and try not to flavor it too off, uh, too awful bad with my own perspective. Um, I'd like to point out that, um, if there is an opportunity to take advantage of low fuel prices and paving, uh, being able to be done at an economical, um, uh, cost, now's the time to do it. Uh, DOT has hit with, uh, what is it? Almost three quarters of a billion dollars of over expense. And all of the paving projects, companies that DOT, um, uh, normally uses, uh, there's a lot of asphalt to be bought. So I would encourage folks now, maybe the time to get good prices in a favorable, um, uh, bid climate because of those two, uh, two circumstances. And lastly, um, the maintenance that we're continually having to do and will continue to have to do over there, uh, it's just not cost effective, um, over there, especially on Seagull Street. And, uh, would like to point out that as that street, specifically Seagull, uh, continues to be developed and, and the nicer homes that are going over there, um, it's just going to become unrealistic to have that, that road graded all the time. It's different on Canal and on the east end where you got, uh, just tons and tons and tons and tons of cocaine that have been put, um, out there over years. And it's just, uh, it is not going to be cost effective for the town to continue to, uh, to perform maintenance over there on, uh, Seagull in particular. The Parks and Rec Master Plan requests for proposals, uh, so in, in closing that, uh, section there, uh, if you're so inclined, go ahead and get those, uh, those petitions into us so we can proceed, um, if, if it's deemed desirable with the petition process. Uh, the Parks and Rec Master Plan request for proposal, that's been advertised and out on the street for solicitation. Uh, update on the Silver Lift Station Three. We are currently, I think the technical, um, description is that we are in operational test mode, subject to final completion and inspection. Major i- major items completed or nearly complete include, uh, the pump station building, include an insulation drive, all siding, metal roofing in the interior stairs, um, along with ground level breakaway walls. We've got the elevated pressure-treated deck in place. Vacuum pumps geared along with the existing system modifications has been completed. Electrical with, including the vacuum station equipment and gas monitoring systems, HVAC units, and the access hatches and scuttle, roof scuttles. Ongoing work includes the existing equipment and electrical demolition, installation of light fixtures, unit heaters, doors, and sound-absorbing panels, along with the interior and exterior finishes and the site restoration. Uh, bottom line is that the contractor remains on schedule to complete on time and is within budget. I believe that the, that contract is eighteen December is the drop dead date on that. And what it does is that it sets up for the next evolution, uh, for the upgrade of Lift Station Two, um, with the engineering RFP and the financing package, uh, to be developed after the turn of the new year. Uh, in closing, got two, uh, other items. The renter for seven ninety-six is in. And also the surveying for the Canal subdivisions. The channel surveying, um, has begun last week in anticipation of gauging the canal conditions by New Year's. And hopefully, we'll have that report in soon. That's all I have.
Any questions of the town manager?
I've got one. Um, David, you got the affirmative responses on these streets for paving?
Yeah, did I not say that? I had it spelled out here. It's, uh, Seagull is fourteen, Deel is four, and Canal is two.
Right. I, my question was going to be, is there any in the negative? And is, is, if there's no negatives, I guess.
There were, there were some negatives, um, but the way the petition process, I just left those off of here. Uh, there were only two or three, um, for Seagull, I believe. Uh, there were a couple, three.
There was one for two of the roads.
Yeah. Uh, the, the way it works is that a non-submital, the only ones that count are the affirmatives ones. If somebody doesn't turn their petition in, it's not counted toward the total.
Right. I just wanted to, in my mind, I just want to see if the rest of them are, like, non-responsive. And I guess barring one or two, then I can assume that just people didn't respond.
Right.
Is there a deadline on any of that?
Well, what we did is we sug, we put on there the fifth of December, um, to return them by. And so we've gone out with a second notice. And actually, what we intend to do is we're going to act, uh, make telephone calls this coming week, um, to, to, you know, go a little bit further with helping people in case they want some more information on it.
That, that was my concern, to make sure that everybody actually got it and understood it.
Any more questions of the town manager? Hearing number fifteen on the agenda is Mayor's comments, and I have just a handful. Uh, I'm sure everyone in the room and everyone listening probably is aware of the North Carolina Governor, uh, making some announcement today, uh, in regards to, uh, future dealings with the COVID, uh, matter. And, uh, those of us, which means all of us here at Holden Beach are impacted by the tourism business. And, uh, those of us that are in it for livelihood, uh, are really interested and concerned about what the future holds. Because, um, my feeling is that we all remember what happened this spring when we had to close the island to, uh, reservations. Um, there's a lot of rumor going around, uh, that we might see that in the near future again. I don't know what the answer to that is. But I am trying to be forthright and say that I am drastically concerned about reservations for the upcoming season and so forth with all the possibilities of problems worsening, uh, as we go into the reservation time of the first of the year, when the bookings are expected to come in, uh, for the prime time of next summer. So we all keep our eyes and ears open and deal with it as we have to. Uh, I don't know what it all means. It's just a, a flag going up to pay attention. Uh, we've already talked about Canal Drive and the other paving streets. Uh, I was disappointed with the amount of conversation that I have had from different property owners on the different streets in consideration and just an outgoing, uh, plea for those people that live on those streets under consideration of paving, to please, uh, let your voices be heard and, um, realize that, uh, it's expensive to grade and haul cocaine to continuing to try to maintain these streets versus the, uh, once-long-term maintenance solution to paving. Uh, another concern that we have, uh, this Wednesday, and that's tomorrow, uh, we have a, a meeting at the county complex, uh, concerning the, the inlet waters, our beach renourishment programs, and the waterway maintenance and so forth. Um, we are, I am continuing to hear more and more complaints about Lockwood-Folly Inlet. Um, just to reassure the public that is listening that we, the town of Holden Beach, are doing the best we can thanks to our town manager and assistant town manager and others that are staying in communication with the powers that be. Uh, this is something that we are paying attention to. Uh, I have had some calls asking me why we're not doing this and why we, the town's, not doing that. To my knowledge, we're doing everything that we can in the environment that we are dealing with. So just be reassured that the town is continuing to stay on top of that. Um, I have a, a letter, uh, that I received today uh, from an oceanfront homeowner in regards to Beach Vitex. This is the plant that we don't want on the island. And, um, that's a sore subject. But if anybody, uh, thinks they might have this on their property, please let the town know and we'll do what we can to help fight this matter. Another concern and the last one I'm going to address is Thanksgiving. Um, I'm sure the other rental companies are enjoying reservations being made for Thanksgiving. Um, I would encourage residents and also property owners to be mindful of the potential governor's, uh, announcements and directives in regards to, uh, events possibly over the holiday period with, uh, cookouts and habitation of our rental houses. Uh, that's a, a valid concern to be in compliance with whatever comes down from our governor. And with that, uh, happy Thanksgiving to everybody and thanks to everybody for being here tonight. Mr. Brown, you have the floor, sir, to share your knowledge and experience.
Just a, 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 a quick thanks, Jeremy, to you guys. We had a, one of my neighbors the other night. She was just in absolute panic mode, came to my house crying. I just took forever to get her calmed down. She thought she had lost her dog. So we had the dog patrol going, okay? And then at the very end of it, after about an hour and a half, we found the dog inside the house. And we searched from one end of the island to the other. But I just want a special thanks to you officer there. He was very good to, to my neighbor and just very, very reassuring, look, we're going, we're going to take care and, and super good, just really, really did a great job. So he's to be commended there, okay? And, and, uh, we know we're, we're coming up on Thanksgiving and, and with our travels, we want to be safe. Stay out the big crowds, okay? Be thankful for our time together and, and let's have a, a really good Thanksgiving.
Mr. Tyner.
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, uh, particularly with, uh, my health challenges during Sep, August and September. I'm, I'm especially thankful that, for this Thanksgiving.
Every day is a great day.
We thank you that you're still with us here.
Every day.
Mr. Murdock.
I would also like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving holiday. Um, use your heads, stay safe. Um, and, uh, a big thanks again to the staff of the town of Holden Beach for their hard work and to the board. Um, we're doing the best we can up here. Since we had the subject of parking, I would like to hear from some of you or all of you on the issue. If you would chime in on that, I'd appreciate it. And I would strongly urge the people of Seagull, Deel, and Canal to get your petitions in while we can do something about this. Because my fear is that the town can't afford to maintain those streets as you guys are accustomed to.
Mr. Sullivan.
Okay. First, I'd, uh, like to take a moment to thank all the veterans, uh, that we have here in Holden Beach. Last week was Veterans Day. Usually the town has a little luncheon for the veterans to show our appreciation. We couldn't do it this year because of the COVID-nineteen. But, uh, rest assured that myself and the board and the town is, is greatly appreciative. But, uh, rest assured that myself and the board and the town is, is greatly appreciative of your service and, uh, very thankful for all you've done for us. Secondly, as far as COVID nineteen goes, uh, if, if you're watching TV, you read the paper, you realize that it's increasing and that, uh, even here in beautiful Holden Beach, e- even though it's, uh, much less populated than it was just a couple of weeks ago, be careful and, uh, you know, try to protect yourself and, and everybody who, who you love and who you live with. Jeremy had mentioned during his talk about the arrest that was made. I, I happened to speak to the arresting officer. In addition to catching this person, persons who were breaking into the cars when they apprehended that person, he had stolen a revolver out of one of the cars and the officers were able to recover that revolver when they made the arrest. So, it was, uh, it was, you know, ve- very good police work by, by the police officer and I, I appreciate that, that as well. Uh, just to follow up a little bit on what David said yesterday, excuse me. Yesterday, Pat and I, along with David and, and Christie, uh, spent a, a long day having video conferences with the powers that be and the, the people who can influence what's done at the Lockwood Folly and at beach nourishment. And it's just, it was, it was interesting. Uh, I, I wasn't able to go last year, uh, but it was interesting to see how, how you have to maneuver. And, and you, you can't, you can't dance with this group if you don't know the steps. And, uh, it, it was, it was good to, uh, to see the way, uh, former Congressman McIntyre was able to, uh, teach us the steps or at least lead, lead in that dance. And, uh, it was really good to, to see that, uh, we spoke to both senators, United States Senators' offices and Congressman Rouser. And the three of them are going to send out a joint letter supporting the positions that Holden Beach is asking for. So, uh, can't, can't tell you what's going to happen at the end of the day, but at this point, we, as the mayor said before, we're doing absolutely everything that can be done and doing it in the right way to accomplish what has to be accomplished to keep Holden Beach viable and beautiful for as long as we're here and our grandchildren are here.
Ms. Pat.
I'd just like to thank everybody who has listened in today to, um, what's been a really good meeting, I think, with a lot of discussion. Um, I'll just add a few things to what Mike said about the meetings yesterday. Um, Lockwood Folly inlet dredging, the beneficial use of sand, that was discussed a lot. And I don't think there is any question that the people who were in the meetings with us do believe that the way that it is traditionally be done, been done, the way that we say it should continue to be done is the best way to do it. And it's just, there's some things in the system that need to work through. They need to better understand why there's been some changes. But I think that, you know, given time, it'll come back to where it needs to be. The Army Corps, when we discussed different things, they were very complimentary on how organized we are and how aware we are of the proper steps to take. So, we have a very professional, not just lobbyist, but town staff that know what they're doing and how we have to proceed. And this meant a lot because the Army Corps people don't have to spend time in these meetings explaining things to us. They, they are listening to us and giving us advice of how to do the next steps better, not that we have to tell you all the steps to do. So, that was also very beneficial. And lastly, I was there last year as well as this year and I felt very encouraged in one area in particular. We have been trying with various arguments and position papers to get a ground swell on getting proactive funding established for beach maintenance, beach nourishment type activities because you spend a dollar now, it can save you six in disaster relief. And this town spends getting close to half a million dollars a year on just what you would call routine maintenance, keeping the status quo. Um, it was encouraging to me that, that Congressman Rouser, Representative Rouser actually said, you know, this year, there is a ground swell building. There's some traction starting on the idea that, yeah, there needs to be stuff done to help prevent the disasters, after the disaster, the aid, of course, but some more proactive funding for resiliency, for doing the kinds of things that you're talking about. He said, it's going to take time. But he said, there's a consistent sort of murmur about this making sense. So, I think we got our stake in the ground early. Um, we can build on what we've started. We've got a lot of help from Louisiana where they have a very proactive group down there that are influential and God knows Louisiana needs all the help they can get after this year. So, I think that, again, it's, it's not a one or two-year thing that's going to solve this. We need to be in this for several years, but we're doing a good job. And I think we are recognized by our senators, the Corps. They, they respect what we do and how we think. And with that, I wish everybody happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Thanks for everybody being here and I'd love to hear a motion that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.